The meeting of the Planning Commission order will begin with the pledge to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ed, would you call the roll? Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Hadden.
Here.
Mr. Perkovich.
Here.
Mr. Snell.
Here.
You entertain a motion to approve of the minutes of the meeting.
I'm moved.
Second. Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Snell.
Yes.
Item three under old business, I entertain a motion to take that off the table. We're going to dismiss that this evening, so rather than wait, we'll do it now. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take it off the table.
Second. Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Snell.
Yes.
You entertain a motion to dismiss it without prejudice.
Motion to dismiss.
Second. Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Snell.
Yes.
Okay, we have two public hearings this evening. The format we follow for public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do in a location, then those wishing to speak in favor are afforded a similar opportunity, then those wishing to speak against are given an opportunity to speak again. So with that in mind, condition used permit to allow child daycare at 8525 Lakeshore Boulevard. Is that applicant available?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Vicki Kurnak, I'm the executive director of Panisome, in which we are a maternity home for women in crisis pregnancies. We can house up to six women and their children at a time, and we would, right as of current, the way we operate is our women need to use government vouchers to attend public daycares so that they can go to work and school, as we have never had the opportunity to be able to offer babysitting services. So I would like to formalize that, and I am walking through the ODJFS licensure process to have a licensed daycare, just so that it's very formal and following all of the state guidelines. And that would also allow us to allow our alumni moms, who we often move out of our home into apartments in or around Mentor on the Lake, and so they're close enough that they can have access to still allow our alumni moms to bring their children back to be in the home that they are familiar with and know, and the people that they know. So that would also be a service to them, to help them financially continue to get on their feet as they're single moms. So, do you need more information than that?
I think that's got it.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak against?
Mr. Chairman, there's only one other person online that I don't know if they want to speak for or against.
We know who it is?
It's a Patrick Dowd.
Patrick, are you there?
I am here.
Are you speaking in favor or against?
Well, I'm attending for the Rock City portion of the hearing.
Okay, never mind.
But I am in favor of what they're doing, what is working.
Well, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Decker, are you available?
Decker, unmute.
I am available.
There we go.
Okay, any thoughts on this project?
No, I wrote a little bit of a staff report regarding what the Ohio Building Code would allow. The way I would read that building code, we would allow up to five unrelated persons to come to this particular daycare, in addition to the children who will dwell in the units.
If we made that a condition, would the applicant accept that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Questions? Commission members, questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the condition, a fourth condition, that they're limited to a maximum of five alumni children. See a hand coming up.
Chairman?
Yes.
I would recommend for the commission to consider the three conditions plus the two conditions that Mr. Decker outlined in his memo, and he's already addressed that item.
Okay, and I'll just revise that and state that we're, I would say to approve with five conditions, as they are already defined.
Second. Have you read the five conditions? Do you agree with those?
Is that question for me?
Yes.
Where are the five?
Three of them are at the end of the staff report, and then Mr. Decker had two.
Oh, I see, okay. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I agree to those.
So I've made a motion.
Motion and second. Ed, would you call the roll, please? Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Snell.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that, is that all?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're in business.
Thank you so much. Do I need to stay on?
No.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can leave anytime you want to. Condition used permit to allow recreation facility 8001 Moving Way, is that applicant available?
I am. Yes, I'm available.
Okay, give us a little overview of what you want to do.
Sure. So, we are looking for a sort of facility to primarily conduct a junior Olympic volleyball club. Those activities go on, for the most part, in the evening hours and on weekends. So, again, that's our primary function during the day, figuring that we would have this, you know, the use of the facility. We thought that with the growing sport of pickleball, that would be another opportunity to get some activity in there during the daytime hours. So, that's what we're looking to do, and then, you know, expanding from there based on the use and the growth and the interest, I guess, of other activities. But, again, primarily our focus is to get some volleyball courts laid down and train kids on playing and conducting volleyball.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against?
We have the property owner and Mr. Dowd on the line.
Who's Mr. Dowd?
So, I'm a vice president of Sequoia Realty Commercial Brokers, based here in Mentor, Ohio for 30-plus years, and I represent Mr. Bezek and Rock City Sports on the possible transaction.
Okay. So, Ed, are you there?
I am.
Okay. You're the applicant, you're the owner, you're representing the owner.
Yes.
Kathy, do you have a comment?
The original applicant would state his name and address for the record.
Yes, please, Dan Bezek, B-E-Z-I-K, 8336 Gosling Way, Mentor, Ohio.
Okay. Commission members, questions for the applicant?
It seems that the, one of the issues with this development is parking. The existing parking is not sufficient, some additional parking, significant amount of additional parking has to be developed. It's not in the proposal, how would you respond to that requirement?
Ed, you're on the line too. I think the owners are willing to create and, you know, line the property or the parking lot area to create sufficient space. Ed, do you have anything to add to that?
Ed, are you there?
Yes.
So you would agree to that?
Yes, we would agree to strike the lot. We have additional parking that Mentor Nissan takes up right now that we could make room to accommodate their needs.
Okay. Mr. Varga, does that satisfy you?
Actually not, I mean, it would be useful if we had a proposal that showed how they're going to, he's showing me something here, what are you showing me? Well, that's not enough additional parking. Okay, well, let me ask, before I make my statement, let me ask the city, how many parking spaces? I read this as they have 91 installed, plus seven, that's 98. And the number required would be 168 for this use and approximately 150 for the industrial use? That's a, that's a big difference in parking. We're talking about...
I think what we did was we calculated the parking based on requirements when the building first went in, it may have been planned under different standards, and maybe it's valuable to have the owner speak to their current parking needs. He did address the one item that we had of concern was that Nissan was parking cars there, which isn't part of the original intended use of the building. If those are going to go away, you know, what does the current tenant utilize in terms of parking spaces?
Just so that we, I can clarify this, so below the gray line there on this, on this off-street parking and loading chart, it would show me that they need 318 spaces.
Well, I think you could...
For both uses.
I think you can address, or look at it also from the standpoint of the industrial tenant would be there during the day, and there would be some overlap in use in number of spaces, so the total number of spaces may not be necessarily equivalent to the, just adding those two numbers together, but I think that should be clarified in terms of daytime needs versus evening needs, because of the times that Rock City Sports has indicated, much of their hours are going to be in the evenings, albeit though they do have daytime hours for some of the pickleball, I think the majority of the parking needs are going to be in the evenings.
That is correct.
Do you plan on having weekend tournaments?
Not at this time, I mean, if we did, it would be something that we'd come back to and get approval. I mean, we, you know, we see a really big industrial facility next door to us, if you will, you know, and the possibility exists of trying to see if they will let us use some parking during the weekends, things like that. It's not our, it's not our priority, and it's not a necessity for us to exist, to run tournaments.
So you're just going to have practices during the week with your J.O. teams?
Yeah.
And no, no weekend tournaments at all? Because that's where you need the parking, I've been to these volleyball tournaments. Parking usually is a nightmare at these places.
Right, when we practice, it's, most kids get dropped off, and there's, you know, some parents stick around and stay, I would say that, but for the most part, yeah, you're right, I mean, it's the tournaments that are chaotic. And again, I mean, if we were ever to, I don't know if we can come back and get some sort of approval, or whatever, and obviously we'd have to talk to neighboring businesses to see if there could be, you know, something worked out to, you know, lease their lot, borrow their lot, but yeah, for the most part, we don't need to have tournaments to exist, it's just something down the road we could look into.
Mr. Bezek, I have a question.
Yes.
What's the difference between your application tonight and the application which we approved back in February?
Nothing really, other than the location, and we couldn't, we couldn't quite work out the lease requirements that were, that we were working on in the other building on East Avenue.
So there's nothing different in terms of the operation?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to address, or have somebody address, the fire department's comments. They're my number one concern with this, and is the property owner going to address those?
Go ahead, Ed.
What, what concerns are we talking about? Because I know one of them was parking, or the use of...
Well, I think if you look into the fire department comments in the staff report, there's three items listed. One on separation between assembly use and that's one use.
I can speak to that, this is the, I'm going to have by tomorrow some quotes on some dividing apparatus, either wall or rocker drapes, that type of thing, that could suffice to separate the areas.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd ask Mr. Decker to comment on that, because he actually went out to the site and met with the applicant, and is also well aware of the concerns of the fire department.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Yes. Well, I have asked in our comments that we have a registered engineer or architect design the interior alterations for the space to analyze the Ohio Building Code and make appropriate construction documents to approve, just like we do any other interior construction project. I can also attest to the fire department's concern about the access road around the building, particularly at the fact that there will probably be, probably be a heightened level of rescue calls, because now we're going to have a concentration of people, somebody could get injured. For them to take a gurney from the front of this building, if you will, around to the back, is a pretty good strain on the fire resources.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to suggest, and it may not be desired by the applicant, but I'm going to suggest that we table this until we actually have a site plan that shows the required parking that we can approve, and that the building code requirements are met through the whatever design or detail that's required by the fire marshal and by the building code.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to the second and to table this item. Ed, would you call the roll, please? Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Snell. Yes. Mr. Bezek, I think we're a little ahead of ourselves on this.
Yeah, well, we'll come back with, with the design and the plan then, for the parking and the fire requirements.
Thank you.
And just my personal opinion, I have nothing against this project, I think it may be desirable for the community, it's just that we need, we need a fixed, we need more information and a fixed plan.
Understood. I would, I would comment that I hope that this is the case for all facilities like this.
Okay. Item three was tabled, or withdrawn. New business code amendments to Chapter 1127, definitions in Chapter 1161 Industrial and Commercial Districts by the city manager.
Kathy? Now we get to the fun stuff.
Is it you, or is it Mr. Zeman?
I can go ahead with the outdoor display and storage regulations. Larry, if you could bring up the PowerPoint. I just, I have some visuals just to kind of help walk through these, because I know it's a lot when you're looking at it. And I know for those of you that have been on the commission for a long time, are well aware of this issue, but for those that maybe are still new or getting to know some of the longstanding issues of the city, this has been discussed at length, off and on, and you guys, you guys. The planning commission has seen many applications with regard to storage of various materials, merchandise, et cetera, in many of our big box and even smaller scale retailers of the city. So, last year, the help of the law director, some suggested updates to the existing Chapter 1161 were prepared and then passed along to the administration for review and possible revision. And so we've spent quite a bit of time looking at this, looking at it from the standpoint of the questions we receive on a regular basis, the proposals that we receive, and so hopefully this will make sense. Again, yes, it's a bit more text, but I think the text is meant to serve as guidance for both you as the commission and also the administration, as well as the applicants that are applying. So, if I could just go through quickly the, the items that are within Section 116104, we took the existing text and just struck it, and just basically rewrote and started over to expand upon, I think, what's been, I think, intended or hoped for, but not always clear to particularly the applicants when they submit. So we've created some, a purpose statement with, you know, what is the goal of these regulations? It's all about, you know, protecting, obviously, physical appearance of the city, mitigating any kind of adverse impacts on adjoining neighbors, and also then to control these outdoor activities so they don't get out of hand, which you do see in a lot of neighboring communities. I think Mentor's done a pretty good job, but nonetheless, we still receive requests, and this is again, hopefully to, just better guide and control them in the future. So, one of the biggest points was outdoor display, and that item has not changed. What we have clarified is that outdoor display of merchandise, and I'm under 116104B, outdoor display of merchandise would only be permitted as a temporary event in accordance with our current temporary event guidelines. So there would be no change to that, other than what's outlined in this section, and we'll get to that in just a minute, about outdoor storage of, for business districts and also commercial districts. Vending machines is something that, again, could be regulated, and I know our law director has a comment about this, so I'd certainly like him to speak to that, but the thought here was that either only allow them outdoor as necessary, or if you're going to allow them, again, make sure that they're shown on a site plan with your approval. They can't just pop up somewhere without oversight and review on a, on a site plan. Joe, did you want to speak?
Sure. Commission, obviously, probably two ways to go with it, one would be a complete prohibition of outdoor vending machines, that's a simple law to write. Section C there on page one would simply say vending machines shall be located inside of a building, period, or they shall not be located on the exterior of any building, period. Now, if it's the commission's desire to explore carving out an exception, where there may be instances where it may be good planning practice to have outdoor vending machines, the parameters of that exception really have to be very specific. Satisfy due process requirements, that decision's not be arbitrary or capricious. The criteria which guides the commission's decision to approve something or deny it has to be objective. The absence of objective criteria, you really immediately run afoul of that legal requirement. So, a quick, simple example, and you know, applicant A and applicant B, applicant A comes before the commission and says, you know, "It's really necessary to have my vending machine outside of this building, here's why," present their pitch, and the commission accepts that as necessary, or perhaps a hardship. Applicant B comes in, makes their pitch, and the commission says, "Now, we really don't see it in this particular case." Now, the problem that we have is, you're aware, I'm always asking you for purposes of a potential appellate appeal, to make findings of fact and conclusions of law. Well, in those two examples, it's really impossible for you to do that, because the law wouldn't contain any of those criteria. So, I'm not saying it can't happen, if it's good planning practice, then absolutely, there should be a way to draft a law which sets forth the criteria by which those exceptions should or should not be permitted, but it would require a deeper dive in my judgment in order to do so. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Zeman. Ice machines. Will they be vending machines?
Well, you have to look at your definitions for that, generally the vending machine definition, I think it's some type of...
Paying, make, yeah.
Correct, so the vending, so the, that would be an outdoor storage of the ice material.
Okay.
But, again, it might be, it may be a good idea to clarify that. You know, again, I read this as outdoor, I would read that outdoor ice machine as outdoor storage. It may be good housekeeping to clarify that a vending machine, you know, an ice machine or things of that, you know, would be included in the definition of vending machine, or perhaps, you know, outdoor storage. That would be good housekeeping, I think, Chairman.
Thank you.
And that same logic then would apply to LP tanks? If they were stored outside, but you purchased them inside, it would be considered an outdoor storage item?
Definitely the, those tanks would be outdoor storage, I think that's a pretty clear example. Ice machines may be a little bit more ambiguous, simply because, you know, while I think most of the ice machines are pretty much, they pretty much just, you know, maintain the cold temperature for bagged ice. I think there might, so that's why I would, my initial reaction is that that would be an outdoor storage. The fact that they're in an enclosed, you know, device, it may, it may produce a little ambiguity where someone may push that issue a little bit. So if it's the commission's judgment to recommend that ice machines perhaps be specifically identified, that, again, I would, I'd that as good housekeeping for purposes, that purpose.
We do actually add, as I'm reading the vending machine definition, we do include ice machines under vending machine, but if you would rather that it not be in there, we can certainly change that. I think, I think when we were, when we were talking about, and this was the only one where we said that it should be located inside a building unless it can be proven, and obviously the law directors indicated where that can be somewhat problematic to have that second clause of that sentence. So, I think the best idea or approach here would be to either, if you're going to allow the vending machines, it's only with oversight as per site plan review, as we've outlined with some of these other items, or as Mr. Zeman indicated, just prohibit them altogether outside the building.
One of the issues I have with the ice machines is, some ice machines actually use ice. I don't know that they put those on the exterior of buildings that frequently. Some are just, obviously just for storage of bagged ice material. So, you know, perhaps we can refine that a little bit, just to, very...
Just ask a question of everyone involved. Do they make ice machines that are vending machines? Where you pay at the door of the, of the vending, of the, you know, the machine to get your ice? Or is it always you pay inside and just pick it up outside? I'm trying to think myself, I can't, I don't think I've, yeah, so I was just thinking, it might be a vending machine, might be as outdoor storage. All right.
Okay to go on?
Yes.
The next item, and again, some of these items we just pulled out to provide more clarity to the reader of the code, drive-up ATM machines and kiosks, as you would see, when we say kiosks, the pharmacy kiosk, the ones that, like, for example, you have one at the existing Drug Mart on Mentor Avenue, those would be conditionally permitted anyway and required to go through conditionally use permit review. So that's just acknowledging that procedure for that type of use. And then we get into... And then we get into a little bit more specifics. If you go to the next page on page two, we're looking at outdoor collection bins, and Larry, if you could bring back the PowerPoint up. We have, actually have a area of our file cabinet dedicated to outdoor collection bins. Actually been requested quite a bit over the years. Here's an example of an existing set of collection bins that, they are not screened, however, they are tucked pretty far back onto the lot. You really, you really can't see them from the road, but this is just an example of, they're obviously getting used as evidence of this car making a stop here for a drop-off. But what we proposed in the item E is to how to maintain them from a maintenance standpoint, how many that you could have, we've recommended no more than two, and that if you do have any signage, there's parameters on which you can have signage. We want the screen. The big thing is, is that we don't want to see the collection bins located between any main structure and the public right-of-way. I think you just saw one actually this year, earlier in the year, for a proposal on Lake Shore Boulevard, and that's where we actually put in some very specific requirement. And that is already outlined, is outlined here. So that was the purpose of making that clarity. You don't like the number that we've had there, or if you don't agree, this would obviously go on a site plan for, for your review. The next item is...
So Kathy, Kathy, before you move off, so are we saying they must be shielded by a screening of some kind, or the example you have, the building is screening it?
No, they would be, they would be shielded, because they could be on the side of the building and you could still see them. But we want, we want screening, and we refer to the screening that's already actually in the landscaping chapter under section 116206. So collection bins are actually...
So what happens with...
Go ahead.
What happens with all these bins out there that are not shielded or screened right now? Are they grandfathered, or do they have to put screening? How are we going to handle that?
Well, they're going to be, they're going to be, if there, if there's no changes made to the site, they would be grandfathered in. If they come back with a proposal to modify, then we could require the screening at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions on the bins? The next item, we actually did a lot of research on this. We've received a lot of inquiries over the past year on, there's a number of ways you can call it. Basically, there's self-service parcel drop-off or pickup boxes, and we've also expanded it to include lockers. This has been a request that we've received a number of times in the last year of allowing for possibly a locker. I think the question that we faced when we were reviewing this was, how do you distinguish a locker from, from just a standard FedEx or UPS box that you see in this picture? So really, there is no distinction other than size. It's serving the same function. We don't, you don't normally review these, so these actually just find a way of popping up on, onto the site. So what we're proposing is that we would be able to administer, do these under an administrative review with, with parameters for appropriate screening. And Larry, if you go to the next page, lockers are, again, this is a new item, but it's, I don't think the item is going to, or the topic is going to go away. I think these are going to become more and more prominent. You do see them already in the malls. Amazon lockers is another, you know, popular one you see. Some of them are even in clothing stores. They've been requested more frequently to be on, on the outside of a building as opposed to just the inside, again, for convenience of the user. A lot of folks are getting away from wanting to leave boxes at their house, so this is an avenue where they can go to a facility, pick it up, enter their code in, and then they can pull it out. So in this particular instance, which is obviously not in our community, it has some lighting, and there's actually, we would require for these types of size lockers, a security camera that would help to regulate these. Again, this is obviously a new item, so I'm looking for some reaction to this. It's not only seen at gas stations, actually, a few of the requests that we've received were for just retail businesses up and down Menner Avenue. They have found that might be good locations just in terms of the traffic that that area of the city receives. So it was, we were trying to maybe separate these out, but it just didn't seem right to separate these out from the smaller FedEx or UPS boxes, just a different category, or again, really just regulating it from a size standpoint. So I don't know if you have any reaction to those?
Kathy, I have a question. In general, I understand that the, the statements in here, the conditions that these boxes or devices would be located either in the side, like a side yard condition to the building, or at the rear of the building. However, some of these are drive-up function, you drive up to it to drop something in, like a mailbox almost. If you, and I asked this question before, but I want to state it now, if you're, if the, the business is in a strip center, or they don't have a side yard, or they, you know, how would they locate these facilities if they can't put them next to the building? If they put them in the back, that's usually just an alley or a serviceway, I'm not sure that would function. How, you know, they may require, or they may ask us to approve these in front of the business, like on the edge of a parking lot, but maybe not the main street, the right-of-way. But I understand the urge to put them on the side yard or behind the building, but what happens if that's not physically possible?
Well, I think, I think the side yard is probably more realistic. I think the question to the commission is, do you, do you want to see this on the front of a building?
Yeah, no. I mean, my reaction is no, but I'm trying to see what, if someone is in a strip center and they're in the middle of the strip center, that means they can't use any of these devices.
Well, they can, they can put it on the side of, the previous example, it's actually on the side of the building. There are actually a lot of them in the, in the city. Another good example is the Carver Building, also on Center Street. It used to be in the back of the building. After they put the addition on, they moved it to the side of the building. And I agree with you, they can be, these definitely serve as, I mean, if you can do it, depending on the weather, as, as you don't even get out of your car, to do, utilize the drop-off feature. So, you know, I think that, I think it's in the interest of the applicant and the onus is on the applicant to, to find a location that's, you know...
It works.
That works, but also respects the fact that we don't want that to be the highlight of the, of the side of the building.
But it's a slippery slope. Once you let one...
Yeah, I guess...
Because right now, the code is no.
Well, and it says that, it says...
No, or come back to planning.
Right.
Wouldn't we want to see it anyway? Wouldn't it become, wouldn't it come back to us anyway? Either way, old code, new code, they want to put something out front on the side, it's coming to planning.
Well, we made an exception to this particular...
Regardless of size, Brian? Brian, would you want that regardless of size? Would you want every FedEx box brought? I understand the UPS lockers, that makes sense. But do we want to see every FedEx and mailbox that someone's going to put up?
Well, not mail, I don't think we have, like a blue...
Drop-off.
Well, we've, actually, in the definitions, we've excluded US Postal Service.
It's just like FedEx and UPS and Amazon and...
So some of this, the way this is, some, some of this would just be taken care of bureaucratically. They'd come in, if they met the requirement, you could authorize it without it coming to us. It's only going to come to us if it doesn't meet, fall into the, the definition of installation that's acceptable. If there's a nuance, then it comes in front of us.
Well, we, correct. We would actually, if you weren't comfortable with, say, these lockers being reviewed by just the administration, we could add language that says, you know, once the locks, the boxes or lockers, you know, are greater than a certain size, then it goes to planning commission for, we could say something like that.
Yeah, what's that size?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at your example, I'd want to review that. That's the size of a small truck.
Yeah, definitely.
It's like a Conex box.
Yeah, that's huge.
And if you look in item F5, we talk about 20 feet length, you know, that's, that's about that size. So, you know, we could take a, a little bit, make sure that we've got our dimensions correct on the size, because I, I think to Rick Cicero's point, that was why we were going to do it administratively, is I didn't think you would want to see every, every small, you know, FedEx or UPS box, it was just only the lockers that were...
I mean, anything, I, no, not the envelope type. Start talking about packages, I mean, how big the box gotta be when you start dropping a package in it? They fill up pretty quick.
I mean, we're, we're pretty succinct on...
Yeah, I, I almost...
You know? We want to see dumpsters.
I think if you want to drop, I think if you want to drop off, that's going to be one of these smaller boxes. I think it's the pickup...
Yep.
Locations. It's just these lockers that are going to be an issue, because we're going to care about traffic flow, we're going to care about what it looks like, where it's placed, is it in a safe spot around the building?
Lighting.
Yeah, all that's going to matter on these pickup locations.
So we could modify...
I don't get as worried about that FedEx drop-off.
We could regulate it from that standpoint of indicating any pickup boxes or lockers shall be reviewed by the planning commission. Anything that's a drop-off only could be reviewed administratively.
Yeah.
Well, maybe to a certain size.
Right. These locker things look like they're going to be big.
Yeah, these, these are going to multiply, I think.
Like an envelope, like if it's an envelope type only, don't do it administratively.
Yeah.
If it's package...
Well, I don't know that, if you want to regulate it in that regard, I mean, because in these types of boxes, you can put more than an envelope in those...
Right, I don't, I don't know the, the right language for the size of the box, I mean, going out and measuring one. Because it's just, like I said, I led with, it's a slippery slope, there, it's only going to be...
Yeah. It, it has to be size-related, but I do think if it's a pickup location, there's a lot of other concerns we have. Even if it was, you could put a box in this, so what? But if you were going to the same size unit, but you were picking something up, that, that takes a little longer to do. So I think there's other things that come into play.
Well, if you want, we can, we can...
I think size, size might be the right, I think size might be the right way, but I do think maybe 20 by 7 is too...
I guess...
I don't know, I don't know how these things are built, I don't, is that the common size, is that, it feels big.
And they're only going to get bigger.
So we can either say anything less than 20 by 7, you know, that administratively is taken care of, but anything larger comes to planning. Is that the right size?
How about, how about changing the 20 feet to 10 feet? That's about the size of a dumpster. And so that could be handled administratively, like a dumpster would be. But anything bigger than that, we'd have to look at. Does that make any sense?
You just want to make the applicant, you want to make the applicant think about a lot more, if they've got to come in front of us.
Yes? I, I don't know if there's any industry standard, obviously, we're looking at the UPS slide, they may not be cranking something small or off the assembly line, so to speak. So I don't know if there's any industry standards where there's actually options available for the, for the size of the container, if they're all going to look like that or even bigger. If that, if that's relevant, you know, background information for the commission or makes a decision. But that, that, I would imagine an applicant coming and saying, look, your, your code is kind of at a variance with, with, you know, what these products are and how they're manufactured and how they get cited and the economics of it. So that, it could run into those types of arguments potentially.
Yeah.
All right, how about this as a factor in thinking about this? If you can, if you can drive up to one of these things and drop your package in and leave, that's relatively small thing to worry about and it could be done administratively. But if you have to stop, get out of your car, deal with, you know, doors, codes, things, with a big thing like that, that the pickup thing becomes something that we would review under all circumstances because of those other issues that were stated. Is that...
I think it goes back to the pickup feature versus the drop-off feature.
Right, right, that I'm thinking, the pickup feature requires review, the drop-off and those small boxes, that doesn't, that can be done administratively.
Chairman?
Yes.
Is there any, maybe looking at it a little bit differently in terms of the, maybe the footprint that it occupies, you know, anything occupying a footprint of greater than, I don't know, three by three feet, four by four feet, whatever's appropriate, you know, could be approved administratively, regardless of its function, whether it's, you can pick up a package there or drop things off. Anything with a footprint greater than that would require, you know, basically a planning commission and an amendment to approve site development plan. Again, I don't know what those dimensions might be, but that might be another way to approach.
Because these bog, these boxes are bad.
The concern is if these, if these are, are serving hybrid functions or something, then maybe not, that may not be responsive to all the different types of, of these machines that are apparently going to become prevalent.
Any other comments?
Can you keep going?
Sure.
Keep going.
Okay. The next item, I think we're probably a lot more familiar with, item G, which is outdoor storage in business districts. This is taking basically what we see at a lot of our, our bigger box retailers as far as how they deal with garden supplies, live plant stocks, and even bulk material that, or any kind of non-live material that relates to outdoor use. So we looked at this and said, okay, you know what, we're just going to put in the parameters that we've been doing at a lot of these different applications that you've seen over time, that have been, to be honest, a bit of a struggle, just trying to get to some sort of consensus and conclusion. This is a nice example, and I, and again, we're, because we're posing it in a positive light, I think it's okay to share that it's Petites, it's a location where what we've, what we've said in the regulations is, you're going to have an area with live plant stock, it needs to be enclosed, it needs to be adjacent to the building, and it needs to be surrounded on the open three sides by, by screening that's similar to this. You have to have a base that's at least 25% masonry, and the raining area up top needs to be some type of metal fencing. It's attractive looking, it looks permanent, and it looks like it's part of the site and part of the building or an extension of the building. And so this is just putting into, into the code, the, some of the standards that you have done on some of these, of some of these other sites. What we don't want to have, and if you want to go to the next slide, Larry. Now, what we've done in, in item three is when you have like palletized storage or packaged landscape material, what we don't want, it's what you see on the right, is the material starting to stack up just in the parking lot without any type, any type of screening. What we want is, is that those to be also made more as a permanent extension of the building. So what you see is, is, well, obviously, in this example, and I use this example just because if you go to item 3E, there's a combination feature, which we often see, where there's actually live plant stock in that open area and the palletized storage, the bulk packaged material. When you have that, again, we want it properly screened, we probably want a little more screening than what you see in the previous picture that was just, just the live plants. So we're just making sure that the applicant is aware, okay, look, if you want to do this, it's got to be screened, and here are the requirements for the screening. So that's, that's really what item three is, and items one through three are doing under item G of outdoor storage in business districts. So we've broken it down again, if it's exclusively live plant stuff, or if it's just the palletized material, or if it's a combination of, of the two. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. We'll go on to the industrial districts. This is, um, basically taking what was originally, um, we have an existing section that's earlier in this particular chapter, and it's the second amendment under section 116101A15. So that addresses, um, screening of store materials in industrial areas. What we wanted to do again was just better spell out what we are hoping to see in those areas so that it's consistent and it looks attractive. So there, on the left is a nice overhead view of the amount of outdoor storage that an industrial uh, facility can have. But this is the same facility. Uh, looking at it from the front of the building, when done right, it can actually look very nice. It's got a nice building wall to it. The only thing that has is, is an opening is the security gate, and the rest of it is covered from the right of way view. So this is a, in our minds, a great example of what we want to continue to see. You go to the next page. This is probably what we, um, want to avoid. Where you can actually see the material, it goes above the screening wall. It's viewable from the street. While they do have a gate, it's left open all the time. This is what we're trying to avoid because this is what has the impacts not only on the neighbors across the street, but also on the neighbors um, either to the left or the right or the back of the property. So that is the purpose of the, um, of item H is to make sure that the outdoor storage in industrial areas is clear. It's, the screening is much, um, um, more prominent in the industrial area. We want a solid screen, whether it be, um, um, masonry material or solid vinyl fence that's appropriate, and that's also compatible with the existing building. So this would replace what's in that section 116101A15, which we've shown as a strike through in the next amendment. The items that we haven't changed, again, would involve, um, the storage of li, of, of earth materials, gravel, mulch. Those are already regulated and we've kept that section the same. Uh, and there's very specific guidelines with regard to that. Any questions on that?
Chairman? The, the one issue I have in this section is number three. For the purpose of this section, each day, any person shall continue to store material without the permit required by and in violation of the section shall constitute a separate offense. So the way I read that, if, I don't know, let's say they're stacking up pallets too tall. You get offense on Tuesday. They come back out, it's a separate offense on Wednesday, separate offense on Thursday and Friday. You might wind up with 35 offenses. But.
That's crushed them.
Yeah, that's the, that's what we have now. There's, this is going to be stricken from it. So, so in theory, I'm a store and I've stacked up whatever. It's one infraction if I have it there all summer. Maybe the fines a couple hundred dollars and I just say, that's just one infraction, I'll just, I'll just have one, I'll just, I'll just do this for 90 days. I mean, here,
It's cheaper.
It's cheaper to just, rather than I'm, I'm, I'm compounding these infractions.
The only reason that, that we struck it from this section was because we just didn't feel it was appropriate in the location. I'm not saying that this can't be regulated this way. It's the only section that talks about the offenses that you incur. And, 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 and the law director can correct me if, if this is not appropriate. I just don't think that this is the location to be talking about the offenses if you don't follow the guidelines of the code. There's a separate section of the code that addresses.
And is it compounded daily? Separate section? No?
Yes. Um, I'll, I'll get you that citation. There is a, in their administration enforcement, there's a general provision that deals with violations of the zoning code. I'll, uh, I'll get you that citation in just a second if I can have a few minutes.
So the only point of, of restriking it here is that it's already addressed in that section.
Okay.
That was the only reason we did that.
In the administrative section.
Correct.
Okay. All right, keep going.
Good point.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A little quicker than, uh, 1129.99, which is penalty. A violation of any of the provisions of the zoning code or failure to comply with any requirements hereof, including conditions, I don't know, uh, shall constitute a third degree misdemeanor. Some additional language, um, that section ends with each day upon which such violation continues shall constitute a separate offense. But generally when we're, and we don't have to file a lot of complaints, fortunately, here in the city of Mentor. But when we do file, um, a criminal complaint for a violator, um, we, we reference this penalty section along with, of course, the specific code section that is being violated. And generally the, uh, those complaints read, uh, on such and such a day and continuing in course, continuing course of conduct um, to the present, which in the present would be the date that the complaint was filed. And, uh, we will occasionally file multiple complaints where compliance is becoming problematic.
112999 penalty covers the whole thing.
Correct, correct.
Anything in here.
All violations, yeah.
Again, so to Ms. Mitchell's point, it's, it's, it's really redundant to have it again in that section. It's, it's, it's just nice to clean it up to prevent any sort of conflict.
Okay, the last, uh, the last two sections deal with outdoor propane sales exchange areas and above ground tanks. And we wanted to address this item because often, again, this off, this comes up quite frequently. The example you see on the screen is, is a recent example of the proposed GetGo gas station uh, that is moving forward in front of GetGo, uh, uh, I'm sorry, the new Giant Eagle on 615. You can see in the bottom, uh, left, uh, side of the wall is a small enclosure area for propane. And that's the, that's the, under what we address under item two, those are the exchange areas. Uh, they're very, they're relatively small in nature. You also see them at some hardware stores. Uh, that, but they, we are suggesting again that they're not on the front of the building, that they're on the sidewall or a rear wall of the building. Now, in this instance, I noticed this, and, and this is something maybe you want to address or not. We talk about it has to be, um, secured by a lockable ventilated metal cage. I have seen in the, in the city where we've also done, in addition to the cage, we've, we've required additional screening on top of that. I don't know if you want that. Um, I think there is some benefit to people knowing exactly where it's located. Um, but if we, if you wanted to, um, add an additional screening uh, other than the, the cage, we could add that. I did, did not add that in, in section two. Uh, but we talk about having a secure gate and it's, um, obviously on a improved surface, but the gate being not on the front of the building. Uh, item three involves, um.
Hold on, I got something on that too.
Sure.
So, you know, our big box stores, they store these propane tanks inside the garden center. So it was a condition when they came that they had to have that stuff inside. So now can they move it outside to the side of the building? Or is their original conditions, are they grandfathered into their original conditions to not then piggyback these to move the propane tanks to the side of the building? I guess is where I'm asking. Do they still have to adhere to their conditions? That when they came in front of planning and they proposed their building type and said, and it, and I wasn't here, but I, I, I know some of the older guys were that, you know, that you have to have these garden centers and you have to have your stuff inside. Can they now move it out under this new code?
Now, I can't speak either to, if that was a condition of the approval, that it had to be inside, I would think it would be safer to be outside. Uh, but I can't speak to that. I don't know if, if anybody else wants to speak to.
Well, the garden centers are outside, I mean, they are open air. So.
What I'm saying is.
They're not going to be required to move.
Not required to move it.
They may want to move.
But you, we already showed us a, a slide of, of the business that I'm talking about, and they're moving everything outside. So why wouldn't they create more space by moving all their propane tanks to the side of their building? Because they could save space in their.
Uh, you know, the short answer is yes. Uh, where the district regulations and a particular zoning change, any property owner, um, you know, can make application and, and request approval um, in conformity with those new revised regulations. Grandfathering is really a, where, where regulations change such that uh, behavior, uh, or use, um, or, or a type of improvement, um, lawful when initiated is no longer lawful. That's where we get in the concept of, of a lawful, quote unquote, grandfathered, non-conforming use. But, uh, but, but yes, um, you know, um, they could make application uh, conformity with revised district regulations.
Well, well, then with that being the case, I would suggest that we add, or you add a paragraph about screening. Not just the enclosure, not the, beyond the cage, but that, that this area is screened.
And has to be brought to planning for review.
Right. As an architectural.
And that is already in there. That's actually under item I. Outdoor areas may be prevented provided the planning commission first approves such outdoor areas on a site planning. Oh, it talks about, it talks about that already. Talks about some general requirements. All of these areas have to be in accordance with the fire code. And they also have, um, um, any kind of screening in terms of, uh, protection against vehicular impact, which is under the parking lot safety standards. That's I addressed under the general requirement. We could add particularly under item two, um, additional screening would be required.
From an architectural point of view.
Yeah. That's, yeah, like I said, I noticed that, and that's why I brought it up. I just think that if you want, we'll add it under item C, we can add that.
And it would be something we would review. We might not require it all times, but at certain installations, we may require it to be an architectural detail for screening.
But how do you say no if some big box store comes in, puts it on the side, it's during our review process? We agree with it. Said existing big box store now puts an application in.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting.
How do you possibly say no?
No, you, you don't necessarily say no, but you can require them to screen it and make it an architectural, acceptable architectural feature. So you address it, you address it so it just doesn't show up. Create some other condition. Make it more desirable or pleasant or screened.
Anybody that would submit would have to meet the requirements of the section.
And I was just saying that, that the screening might be a, a requirement that's if the planning commission would review.
If you look at items, um, under item three, which is the next item we're going to talk about, 3C3.
Yeah, I see.
Landscape material planted in a manner to screen it to off-site, off-site views year round. You could do that, I'm sorry. 3, 1, 2, or 3, you could do any of those options.
Yeah, but these, yeah, right, to the smaller tanks, to the, to the retail area. These are for the big tanks, right?
Right, right.
But you could do the same thing.
Right, we could take similar language and, and put it up there is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I would suggest we do that, just be able to cover it so that they just don't show up in places and we have to prove it.
Okay.
Without, without the screening.
Well, these garden centers where these propane tanks and stuff in.
Have been inside of it.
They, these places swell. Others, they, all these different holidays when they bring the flowers in. And the first thing they're going to truck outside are these propane tanks.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. They'd have to have more of a developed architectural enclosure for this. So it's not just an arbitrary thing.
Well, and the point is, is they can't just throw them out there and then toss them back and forth. They have to, they would have to be permitted in.
Because if, if they're in, they're in that big garden center.
They do it.
Yeah, they're doing it now. You, you're, you're all correct. They're doing it.
I don't know if that's a code.
This gives us the ability to say to them, you have to come forward and, and get it approved on an approved development plan.
On a new plan.
If they're going to move them outside, they need to come in front of us to do it.
Who's going to place that?
Oh, we do, we do it, I mean, we do it now. Uh, can we keep going?
Yes, sure.
Item three addresses the above ground bulk tanks that you see if you go to the next slide. Uh, we've seen these in, in a couple of different locations. I think what, what we've seen and we've reviewed some of the, um, regulations at some of the other communities, I, I think really they're trying to get away from the vertical. Um, vertical tanks that you see on the left and, and really encouraging the horizontal direction whenever possible. I think for obvious reasons. Better. Um, and we talk about where we want these. I think this is a great example. We have one that's pretty large, which is actually on the right. And it's, it's in the front parking lot of, of, uh, of the site. And I guess what we're recommending is, is that they, again, they're, they're on the side or the rear. Do you want that to be the main feature in the parking lot or do you want that to be off to the side? So that was how we drafted this under item A. We'd rarely rather see this, um, on the side. We don't want this sticking out in the middle of the parking lot. Um, it can be on, in, in parking, but again, off to the side. Um, that's our recommendation, that, with the screening that we talk about and outlining. See. But that's, that's it. We, we, uh, in terms of addressing above ground tanks and outdoor propane areas, that's what we've proposed. And then we've added at the end, it's just bumping it down. Temporary events or sales, this is an existing chapter. We're not recommending this be changed. That this is, this is what goes into effect if somebody wants to have some, again, the Mother's Day plant sales, et cetera. This is the only avenue that they can utilize, which is only a certain number of times per year and a certain number of days. That can be reviewed administratively. If they go beyond those parameters, that's when it would have to go to you.
Kathy, if, I've been on the commission for a while. I don't remember any of these really coming to us. So I'm, so it, it suggests to me that you're being able to take care of these administratively.
They have. I, you know, I guess a, a great example is the one that we just had, but was dismissed. But the, when the, when the, when the activity doesn't relate to the actual primary use of the site itself. Uh, the hot tub sales at the mall, there are, there is no hot tub retailer at the mall. So that was a good example. And then we have those that have the music or public address system. Those are the ones that you've seen as well.
Mm-hmm.
I'd note at the bottom, a recommended, um, and, and if you have any thoughts on this, this just, this particular item, I'm not recommending deleting it, but it just seems lost in this particular chapter. And it would be nice to see this moved somewhere. Um, I know it's taken me a long time in my time here to find this section because it's one sentence and it's just plopped in here. And I just feel like there might be a more appropriate location to put this. Whether it be under the sign chapter, we seem to address it mostly with the signs, at the canopies of the gas stations. Or it could be under the supplemental district regulations. But it was just a recommendation to pull it out of this chapter. But if you want to see it stay, we can keep it, we can keep it there. Now, as far as the rest of the regulations go, and I, I talked about that briefly, 116101A, which is just an earlier section of this particular chapter. It eliminates item 15, item, um, and then item C um, under that section 116101. The only reason we recommend eliminating item C is because in my mind, this shouldn't be a special provision just for one particular. I, I think that this is a, a provision that you would want to enforce consistently during your site plan reviews is to not necessarily allow for front loading areas to be in the front. Uh, and they, they have to be fully screened. I would think that that would be a provision you would do with all of your reviews of industrial areas. So I felt as though that was something that we could take out and not, uh, just feature for one particular. So that's why that's shown as a screen. The chat, the, the amendments that proposed in 112701 are just the, are the particular terms that are outlined in 116104. And they would be inserted into definitions chapter.
So do we need to vote on this? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I can make the changes that you guys, you, sorry, that you have suggested and come back and you can look at the language, however you want to do it.
So to go back to page one, are we a no on the vending machine? The, uh, C? As it, you were kind of hard to define, so should we just scratch that?
Chairman?
Yep, I'm sorry.
Mr. Zeman?
Um, yeah, the question regarding ICE machines. Absolutely included in the definition of a vending machine. It includes, I'm quoting, it includes freestanding containers or racks from which customers may pick up, purchase, or rent at merchandise in examples. I, I'm, I'm wondering though, since the question came up. I'm, I'm wondering though, since the question came up and, and, you know, there was a little bit of uncertainty. You know, we, we want code to be in, in as plain English as, as possible and as logically organized as possible. Because it should be user friendly. We hate to have code which is, causes gotcha moments with people who took, took a look and say, well, it doesn't seem like what I'm doing here was included in this. So, so I don't know if, um, the commission gives that vending machine definition another read, if it feels comfortable with it. If you feel as though maybe an additional definition, um, would be more user friendly. I, I don't have strong feelings either way. I think it's a good comprehensive definition. But again, it should be user friendly to the extent we're able to craft a law which is enforceable. And both, um, puts people on, on kind of ready notice as to what it is that they're looking for and what is and is not permitted.
Can we address maybe the vending machine with the condition that planning commission may require it to be screened from view?
I guess the question is what, you know, a lot of these are just pop machines and, and obviously they would, those vendors would love to just throw them outside the building.
Exactly.
If, if, if you're screening it, they're probably not defeating the purpose, which is that people would see them offsite. There has been instances, I think the, uh, is it the Speedway at, um, Isley and Route twenty? Where the commission, um, as part of that site redevelopment, had, uh, I believe a masonry wall constructed to, to screen, uh, an outdoor vending machine area. I forgot the exact materials there. I don't know if there was ice machines or what else was within that area. Trying to think of any other examples where the commission has sort of proved an outdoor storage area, but had fairly significant screening for it. I, I, would that, would, does it make sense to then put sort of, you know, pop machines or stuff like that in, in a location of that nature is I guess, you know, one of the, one of the questions that the commission has to contemplate.
Doesn't the code give us all that ability? When you look at C, the definition, I think, addresses ice machines and everything as we've talked. But when you read C, it says it has to be inside. If it doesn't, it pretty much has to come in front of us. Because they've got to define it as a hardship or that it's necessary to be outside.
Uh, yes, but getting back to my initial. Again, getting back to my initial concept, there's, there's, there's nothing, um, there's no absolute barrier to have any exception or what, what something that may be necessary or a hardship. But those terms really need to be defined as applicable to, to, to this section. Um, again, say you have an outdoor vending company and, uh, put your money, it dispenses some type of a rental product, for example. They, they may be able to come in and, and demonstrate very concretely with, with data from other, from other locations that if that machine is, is inside the building, uh, they lose like thirty percent of their, of their rentals. Is, is that a hardship? If you haven't defined the parameters of a hardship, the judicial answer, if it gets up to, uh, you know, to the common pleas court, may be yes. Um, because we fail to define what constitutes a hardship.
Well, there, there are some vending machines all over town and those are grandfathered in. Is, is that why they exist where they are?
There are a few that have been there since, um, well, since I can remember, um, growing up. So, but I think those are probably very, very few locations at this juncture.
But that's why they, I mean, they exist now based on, I mean, just in front, the front wall of a building, convenience store. It's right facing the street. That exists because of a grandfathered clause.
In all likelihood.
More likely, right? So my, again, I'm going back to what, what I was just saying about screening them. If, if we don't require some kind of screening, then literally these can show up on the basis of a hardship on front of every building. Uh, we, the hardship could be defined as we need to do, do this as a business and there's no room inside.
Lottery.
Could be a lottery machine. Could be lots of different things. So.
Could be an ice machine.
Could be an ice machine. So, so what I'm, I'm just suggesting is that if it's a hardship, fine, but if we, but you also have the requirement or the necessity of having it screened would somewhat control the way this would display, develop.
Mr. Chairman?
And because the screening couldn't block the sidewalk or the walkway or lots of things you mentioned.
You know, to, to, to address the point that the law director is bringing up, you could indicate that vending machines should be located inside a building. However, when proposed outside the building, they shall be reviewed on a site plan by the planning commission. And then that's where you can talk about your screen, et cetera. So we're basically encouraging them, the ice machines and the pot machines to be inside the building. But if you really want them outside, then you're going to go before the planning. So it's just a matter of getting rid of the words hardship being demonstrated that warrants it locating it outside.
Right, just take that completely.
Yeah.
Scratch it, take it all off.
Right.
Yeah.
And my only concern is that then you're putting the onus on us to identify the necessity for screening. Though there wouldn't be anything in the code that would say that.
We can reference the screening section. We can put either screening in here or we can reference the screening section, landscaping section. We can do it one, a couple of different ways.
Something that we can
Put our hat on.
Hook our hat on.
Our hat is keep it inside the building.
Well, that's, yes, but, but if there, you know, there's a situation where it, it, you know, a case by case basis, if we're going to review it, we need to have some leverage to be able to get what we need on. I know, but if, if they have to build a brick wall around them and screen them from those right away, then not everybody's going to do that. Or can because of the space. I understand.
I think I'm hearing your comments. If I could maybe make some of the revisions to the draft and bring it back to you next time.
Yeah, I think, I think we may need to review that.
That sounds good.
Okay, who's doing, who's doing number five?
Mr. Chairman? You may want a table, item number four in this.
Motion to table.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Farga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Who's doing number five?
Chairman, thank you. Uh, refer to the planning commission for recommendation pursuant to the code is resolution number twenty R dash one one six. Commission members, the council is requesting your recommendation on a proposed amendment to the zoning code, which would eliminate the residential village green, RVG district, uh, from the code. Uh, there are some supplemental district regulations that obviously would, would also be eliminated as well. A comment, um, during a council meeting, um, the effect as to whether or not the RVG, RVG district continues to be viable, um, whether it's a good planning practice for the city moving forward. And, um, whether or not, uh, the new PD regulations, um, are perhaps a, a, a better, um, way to go relative to some of these planned projects. And, um, so with, with that, uh, the council is requesting your recommendation, be same positive or negative relative to, uh, that district's elimination.
Make sure there's any questions for the administration.
It seems like there's a lot to say, but was there, and just, just for my own information, was there any thought about just redeveloping or redefining the RVG? Have more definition, more restrictions, more requirements? Or was it?
Mr. Farga, I think that's been a discussion for a long time. I mean, I've been with the city for, I think, two thousand and three, so I, I think that discussion's, to my memory, been, been very, very longstanding. With the, um, adoption of the planned development district regulations, takes on a lot of those of, of what was discussed relative to how to, um, perhaps revise and, and better articulate what an RVG should be all about. Now, they can be obviously very, very different districts in terms of what, how, you know, they should look like, but, um, so the short answer is, is yes, but that, that didn't really precipitate the specific.
But that, those discussions actually moved towards the overlay district, residential overlay district as a solution, moving in that direction rather than trying to.
No, no, sir, I don't, I don't know that I would, I would, I don't know that that's fair. I don't, I don't know that there was that, that direct. And I'm, I'm trying to think of my memory relative to public comments at, at any council meetings. I don't recall that, that being stated under those terms, no. Obviously, there's been some, um, questions about RVG and, and, um, what should it look like? Uh, where is it appropriate? Too dense, not dense enough? There's, there's all those questions which, you know, are, are normal in the, when you're looking at planning. If it were to be revised, I guess that's one question for the planning commission. Would it look an awful lot like these new PD regulations? And if so?
No, no, I, I'm not, I'm not speaking in favor of RVG. I'm just wondering if that process had, it created the newer direction. One, just one question from the, to the planners, to Kathy. Do you feel as an administrator of planning that the planned residential development overlay gives you the necessary flexibility in future reviews of projects that the RVG didn't give you?
I feel that the planned residential development overlay option with, coupled with the requirements that are outlined in that chapter eleven fifty-eight, provide the guidance that maybe isn't spelled out in the current RVG regulations. Particularly speaking to open space criteria and also, um, building design criteria that's, that we don't have anywhere else, uh, in any of the even the standard subdivision regulations. And so with that, I think what, and we had that in mind as it being an option. The only obstacle with that is that the only way to accomplish a planned residential development overlay is through a zoning referendum. And so, uh, and, and that might be just fine for the planning commission and council to consider that, being comfortable with that. It just might be an, an option that's not used as readily because of that hurdle to overcome.
So Kathy, I looked through the new regulations to find out what, what would be our, what would a developer be looking for, for a single family home? And I came in with the planned infill development, minimum development acre, area one acre. So it, in theory, it could be fifty acres, right? It could be a fifty acre parcel and they could use planned infill development. And there's no no dedicated open space requirement. Per-site development. And no regulation on density. So. For info. So if you go to the table one oh four H, maximum gross density of PD units per acre, it's per-site development on the infill. So, you know, I was kind of thinking, what would a developer use?
Instead?
Instead. What would he use instead? And, and if I'm a developer, I'm going to try to use the PID, even though I might have seventy acres, I'm going to use this. Now, I do agree the new regulations are a lot more stringent on architecture and, and all that. But, I mean, ultimately, and mixed use, planned residential and planned infill is a referendum vote.
Unless you have, based on the recent amendment that we had, if it's an economically distressed property and can be determined to be that, it does not have to go to referendum vote or the charter amendment.
But, but not if it's a residential.
Residential, no.
If it's R five, if it's R four, it's refer, any, any residential zone, okay. So I mean, I'm just wondering what.
What's really going to happen?
What's really going to happen here? What's really going to happen? So, but ultimately, it's going to be the will of the people here.
Right.
So, and, and, you know, uh, RVG, you know, I felt like it got to a point where it, it, it ended its use and, and I, I'm excited to try these new regulations. See how, see how they come out. See, because, you know, a, a developer is going to have different ideas than we have. They're going to. So maybe we're going to see a bunch of R two. That's all I got.
So let me ask this. Kathy and Joe, are you looking for a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if the commission's prepared.
I'm entertaining motion.
Uh, motion to?
I'm sorry, one question. Uh, the before, before we make a recommendation, wasn't the RVG more or less put in place because of the limited land that was still available for development sometimes had certain features that may or may not have made them desirable? So by making it harder in this process to utilize the PRD, aren't we sort of defeating the purpose of whatever land we have left?
Wasn't RVG a five acre minimum? Now this is one acre.
If it's infill, it's a one acre. It's also, it's five acre if it's a PRD, which is residential.
Well, I think we're going to see a lot more planned infill than we're going to see planned residential development. Because the minimum acreage is one with no maximum acreage. So if, if people are building single family homes, they're going to choose. Because in the other ones, they have to have a minimum, correct me if I'm wrong, of three of the, you have to have, on the chart, you have to have a minimum of three of those uses.
Under the PRD.
Right. But only one on planned infill.
One or more, correct.
One. So, so one, which is going to be a residential, a family home.
So according to that, does that have to go to voter referendum?
All of this does.
All of it.
And, yeah, if it, if it's, if it's a currently zoned residential district and you're doing any of these three, it has to go to referendum. If it's a plighted, I don't know, just using Sears, Sears, then, then no. Whatever is deemed plighted.
Not to go on a sidebar here, but is plighted defined? Does that become?
It is. We approved a definition.
That's infill, economically distressed.
Economically.
Okay, what's the pleasure?
I would say a motion to?
We're really not approving it. We're recommending it, right?
Motion to recommend removing RVG. Or are we approving the resolution? I, I, I don't know.
It's a, it's a recommendation. So, uh, a, a yes vote would be to, uh, positive recommendation that the council, uh, eliminate the RVG district. No vote would be it should, it should remain. I, I would just note, some of the supplemental regulations would, would want to stay, for example, references to the sign. The RVG will still be on the books. It's still going to have land zoned RVG in the city of Mentor moving forward. That land is still subject in perpetuity to the, those current district regulations and the group's development plan going to law. So it, it, it'll, it'll still exist in name. It's going to be enforceable.
Joe, do we have any current RVGs in the application process right now where they would fall within, um, RVG?
There, there have been some approved that are, that have not moved forward. Those, those are still approved. They, they will still be permitted. Unless there's some other, something else happens to cause that to sunset, they'd still be able to move forward with those projects. Uh, any, any pending applications, um, and, um, without getting too, too deep into the analysis, you can't defeat, defeat a property rights once they've made, made application.
Okay, so if they've made an application now, or three weeks ago?
I don't encourage.
Right, you know what, not now, but you know what I'm saying.
Yes, as of now, it still exists, so.
Yeah, right, I'm, yeah. But if they change that, if they, if they say in a year from now, change that at all from that original site plan, they can't reapply for another RVG, they're now falling within the parameters.
They abandon their, if they abandon their application.
It's per-site.
They can still request modifications to the approved development plan. Obviously, any of those modifications have to comply with, with the law existing at the time of approval, so you're not going to be able to get increased unit density or something of that nature.
I got you.
If for some reason they want to modify the street layout a little bit in response to whatever site conditions they encountered, that's still available.
They're still kind of within the.
Approved, that's right.
Okay, so.
Can we stick?
Motion to?
Recommend.
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 Second?
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
No.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Kathy, anything else?
That is it, Mr. Chairman.
You're intending motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.